I will call our, the time is now 7:31 and I will call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Just as a reminder, in accordance with Public Act 101-0640, this meeting will be held by remote attendance and all votes will be taken by roll call. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Here.
Trustee Gagani.
Here.
Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Quintia.
Here.
Trustee Stapleton.
Kim, I think you're muted.
I'm here.
President Graber.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three. Welcome to our visitors. Well, we just want to welcome Ed and any other visitors to the meeting. Thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number four, the approval of last month's minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding the February 24th, 2021 minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve last month's minutes?
I will move to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Quintia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much, Kaitlyn. We have approved last month's minutes. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
All right, we are 16.6% of the way through the year as of the end of February. Our revenues are still at under 1%, which is as expected. And then we are, the library capital replacement fund is at 1.7% expended. You will notice in today's invoices that there is an invoice from Shels McNutt for their pre-construction services, so that is included there. And so you'll see that percentage start to go up as the roof project invoices start to roll in. Our expenditures are at 13.8%. And as noted in last month's meeting, it's just those, it's those same categories where we're over the insurance, which is an annual premium postage and capital, which are, which tend to come in chunks rather than to be a steady expenditure stream. On the invoices, I also want to note the invoice for K and J painting. That was the meeting room and do remember that that includes the removal of the wall covering and the prep work to make that look good afterwards. So it wasn't just painting in that invoice. And it's done and it looks fantastic, so. Any other questions for me? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the financial matters? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
I will approve the financial matters as presented.
Trustee Humphries, was that a second that I saw?
That'll, that'll be just fine, yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you please proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Quintia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any gen, did we have any public comment on agenda items? And also any other, Ed, I don't know if you have any comments on agenda items?
Nothing has come through.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just, I didn't really have anything special to say, but I, I know I missed a few meetings here, but I did want to thank everybody at the library for doing such a great job this past year and keeping both the staff and the public safe. I, you know, as a patron, I really appreciated it. So I know we're not done yet, but I think the hardest part is hopefully behind us and so thanks for the good job that you've done.
Thank you very much, Ed. We appreciate it. Any additional public, okay, I think we're finished with agenda item number six. Any additional comments around agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business?
Nothing's coming.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We're now on to agenda item number eight, new business. Eight A is the Alara Engineering Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal. That's a mouthful. Who's, is it, is it Ian? Are you, who, who can fill us in on the details for this particular project?
Well, I'll start with just the, the general. This is one of the two projects that was added to the capital replacement plan or capital needs assessment plan this past budget session, which was this project and the elevator. We had estimated the project to be at about $75,000. Our estimate is running a little higher right now. We were not, we had been hopeful of reusing a lot of occupancy sensors and switches and things and are finding that some of those won't be compatible, so that will bring the price up. Again, we, as always, we're hoping not to spend the contingency. And beyond that, Ian, if you have anything to say or if anyone has any questions. Ian Nor is our building operations director.
Hey, everybody, how you doing? So yeah, I think Alara, you know, we worked with them in the past on a couple of projects and they actually did the capital assessment when that was done as far as the electrical engineering portion in 2017. So that's pretty much why we went with them because they have a clear understanding of what we're currently faced with, which is, you know, it's the classic tale of people just don't make these parts anymore. They're, they're old. This is old, early 1990s, you know, technology. And unfortunately, I do have some things that are failing due to the age of, of that equipment. And I just can't get parts. Honestly, it's, I, I've scrounged and the only thing I can find is the old electrician who, who has one in his garage, you know, that may or may not work, you know, that you find on eBay. So with, with everything that's changed, you know, as far as, you know, electrical engineering and networking and everything else like that, this does give us an opportunity to upgrade the system and somewhat make it future-proof, at least for, you know, a good 15, 20 years. The one problem, and I'm not even going to call it a problem, something that I wanted to achieve, but we just don't think is going to happen, is doing it all wirelessly. It's just not going to be dependable enough with everything else that we have going on in the building and with some of the distance on stuff. It's just not going to happen and I, I don't want to put in something that I, that might potentially fail or, or disrupt the use for patrons or staff. So we're, we're pretty much going to replace old wall switches and occupancy sensors that aren't compatible with new. We're still going to be able to do lighting networking and there are rebates for that through ComEd. Actually, some pretty hefty ones, which should knock this down quite a bit. I don't have a final figure yet because part of this is going to be going through and actually adding up how many kilowatts we're going to end up saving so that we, we can do that equation. But at, at some point, I will have that for you before it gets turned in at the end of the project. So with, with the new relay panels, it's going to be new interfaces. Everything's, you know, going to be digital, network to computers. We'll be able to do away with the old timer system, which relies on the relay panels now because again, everything is going to be network-based. And we're going to reuse what we can. And when I say reuse, I mean like the newer stuff that was put in in 2018 during that renovation. Some of the 2014 stuff may work, it may not, unfortunately, until we dive in and start looking how everything's ran, we, we won't have a for sure answer yet, but that's where that contingency comes in. You know, there's always a chance that we're going to touch it. I am hoping that's not the case with this, but again, as you start going through things, that's why I wanted to kind of give myself a little bit more of a buffer than I normally would. And that's why instead of 15%, I did the 20% just to give me a little bit more wiggle room. Like I said, I'm hoping I give it all back and then some with rebates. That, that's my plan, but you know, worst case scenario, it's, it's good to have it there. And again, you know, with the, with the bid process, numbers could come in lower. We've seen it happen in the past and we've been shocked, you know? So I'm, I'm kind of hoping with the pool that we have to pick from, from our usual contractors and then some of the stuff that, some of the people that have Alara have used on other projects, you know, we're going to have a pretty good sized pool where we can get some bidders and some really tight numbers. So pretty excited.
All right, thank you. Well, and what I, what I was noticing, I mean, the points from my perspective are the fact that, you know, we, we had budgeted for it. You know, I, I would love it if it came in at, at or under budget, I think, like everybody else, but we've gotten really lucky, well, not lucky, but we've worked really hard to keep the cost down on kind of, on so many projects today that if this one goes a little bit over, you know, it, you know, it happens from time to time. You can't, you can't win them all, I guess. And so, and so if we're, if we're close to kind of where the budgeted number is, or even if we end up where the, where the, the current, I think 94,500, that's, you know, if that's what it is, then that's what it is and we need to get this taken care of, so. I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments for Julie or Ian?
I have one.
Humphries?
Considering, going back to your comments on the, the wireless part, and I, I, I totally trust your judgment, but I'm, I'm just wondering, was it, was it a cost issue? It just ended up costing too much because of the distances or so forth, or was it reliability?
Yeah, that, that was part of it and then reliability. It was about 50/50. The cost, the cost for some of the interfaces, because as, as it goes wireless, you know, things get a lot fancier, touchscreens, pretty colors, little HD screens, yeah. Which is all cool, you know, that's great. And if, if we had a never-ending budget, I'd be all for it. We'd be the coolest library around. But, uh, you know, it, it trying to keep the cost where I felt comfortable giving Julie a number and having you guys generously approve it. I, I, I felt like this was the right decision and, you know, it, in the future, if we want to do an upgrade, that's always an option because the backbone is already going to be there. So we have room to grow with it. And, and we can build off of that, you know, if, if the time comes and we decide that that's a route that we would like to go down.
Okay, and the cost of the technology will probably come down in a few years, so.
Exactly.
Thank you. You answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments regarding agenda item 8A? Okay, do we have a motion to approve agenda item 8A, the Alara Engineering Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal? Thank you very much, Ian.
That's two times in a row you got it, so I mean. I'll move that we approve the, those words you just said.
Agenda item 8A.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item 8A that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Quintia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item 8A, the Alara Engineering Electrical Relay Panel Project Proposal.
You're getting that down pretty good.
We're now on to agenda item 8B, which this one, I'm, I'm interested in the, in the, the background on this one. It's an update to the General Policy Section 2.13.4, Security Cameras Retention of Digital Images. And I, and I think I understand the change, but I'm interested to hear Julie's perspective and maybe background on this agenda item.
So the bottom line is, we added cameras, we added HD cameras, and now we don't record for, we don't have as much recording saved back. And what we've discovered is that it's more like three to 10 days and some of that is, you know, how much the digital or how much the HD cameras captured. Some of them are motion sensors, so it, it does vary there. So this just brings the policy back into line to what is actually happening in the real world. And this was brought to our attention when we had to go back and look for some digital images at the request of our police department.
How many days are we keeping?
It's three to 10 days and what it does is we don't do it automatically. It records, it goes over and records over the oldest. So it depends on especially those motion sensor cameras, how many images, you know, how many people walk by the outside camera late at night.
And forgive me, I don't mean to monopolize conversation here, but is, is that enough? That doesn't sound like very much and it sounds like the police department would hope that maybe we would have a little more.
Well, they only can access very limited from us because of confidentiality issues in, for the most part. Nothing that would have personally identifying information, et cetera, according to the Library Confidentiality Act. We may look into that in the future, but this is where our system is today.
Well, and, and Julie, isn't it, it's a function of like what we currently, our current technology? And so if, if in the future we wanted to establish a 30-day recording that's maintained, we would have to then upgrade the technology that would do that. This is a reflection of kind of what we're currently doing and able to do.
Yes. And from, from here, we'll, we can look and see, quite frankly, for our own purposes at the library, three days is more than enough because generally when we're looking for something, we're usually looking same day or next day. So we, we don't have call to go back very far. At least so far.
Are there outdoor security cameras?
Yes, there are.
Are, are they by the bike rack or where we're?
The newest one is where we're going to put the pickup lockers. Go Ian.
Yeah, so I've got, I've got one that is facing out by the ADA door, the ADA sliding door. If you're coming down the steps and the ramp from the outside, that, that shoots all the way down to Forest. And then you can also see the stairwell up to the landing. And then I have the newest one, which Julie just mentioned, which is, which is pointed at the vestibule under Curtis Street, so kind of where the, the book and the audio return are built into that brick wall right there. And then facing that egress door where you can also see part of Curtis. And then the other one is facing out our staff door. And then you can pick up most of the sidewalk and then all the way across the street.
And then how much of the internal library is? I'm just sort of more curious as, just from like a safety perspective for like patrons of the library, library staff, I mean, I'm like, how, how covered are we kind of internally?
We're pretty good. And I say, and I, I say pretty because there's, there's always, you know, a couple more where we can find a spot where we, we're like, okay, we should really put one there. And that's what, that's what's happened since I've been there and since I came on board. You know, we've added quite a few since when I first arrived, but we do have, we've got pan tilt zoom, which does a 360 all the way around in the kids' room. There is one by where the current hold shelves are that shoots into the café. And then also, like if you're leaving out the Curtis Street entrance, there's one that points as you're coming in from the Curtis Street entrance. And then if you're walking down the hall towards the circulation desk, it also points out that way. Same thing with the opposite side over at Forest. There's, there's one, if you're coming in to exit out the Forest doors. And then there's another one facing the oppor, opposite direction, so you're getting it from both ways. Then there is one right where kids' room, circulation and Curtis Street kind of all intersect right there at that area before you hit the display case for where all the kid's stuff used to be, seems like forever ago, when they used to bring stuff in and we put it in there. And then on the second floor, there is one right outside the elevator. So if you're getting off that, that shows into the DVD stacks and then also the Ask Us Desk. By the magazine area, there is one that's a pan tilt zoom, which I can pick up everything in the magazine area and then part of the stacks and then down the hallway. Then there's another one facing the other side that points down the other side of the hall that is, I, I call it the green wall, that is up against like Curtis, where the study, the single study tables are. There's PC lab, or sorry, not PC lab, PC area for public PCs, media lab, the audio lab. And gosh, where else? I know I'm forgetting.
No, that, no, Ian, I think you've answered. I mean, I was just more, just getting a sense of, I mean, and you've, and you've given me that sense that it's a, it's a, it's well-covered, so thank you.
We have 17 total and, and 14 of those are all interior.
Okay. Thank you. All right, do we have any additional questions regarding agenda item 8B, the update to the security cameras and retention of digital images policy?
Just a comment for some privacy issues. We don't look at these films unless something has happened and we need to look for something. It's not like we just sit down and say, oh, there's so and so there, you know? And it's, and then, and we don't archive.
That is true.
I just wanted to make that point for people so that they understand we're not recording them and archiving it away and stuff like that. We're only, if something bad happens, we'll look for what happened and how we can not have it happen again, but.
Right.
To get images of patrons that have had issues, like if we have to ban someone for whatever reason, we will take a still image so that we can actually let staff know that this is the patron. Other than that, you know, there is no one monitoring the security cameras of live. That is not us. There's nobody sitting in a back room with the wall of monitors.
And you're using a third-party service for the video surveillance?
So we have, we have software and we're not, our, our system is not cloud-based. It's, it's, it's a real fancy set of DVRs that, again, like they had mentioned, they hold it for so long and then the oldest gets scrubbed off and then the newest replaces it.
Yeah. There was, the reason I asked that because the third party, you know, if they were to have a security breach or something, there was just an article on the front post of the Washington Post in the last two weeks about a video camera company being hacked and so.
No, ours are, ours, all of our, our, our video surveillance recordings are kept internal.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments on agenda item 8B? Okay, do we have a motion to approve agenda item 8B, the update to the, to General Policy Section 2.13.4, Security Cameras Retention of Digital Images?
I will motion to approve the update to General Policy Section 2.13.4, Security Cameras Retention of Digital Images as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, excellent. We have a motion to approve agenda item 8B that has been seconded. Kaitlyn, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Quintia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item 8, 8B. We're now on to agenda item number nine, unfinished business, the 9A, COVID-19 Response and Phased Reopening Plan. Julie, do you want to give us just an update on how things are going in the library?
Oh, we added back tables and chairs this week and it's going well. So we did a soft launch. We did not actually publicize this, partially because next week is spring break and we did not want to get absolutely inundated with folks trying to make reservations in advance, et cetera. So we're keeping it on the QT till next week and then we'll start publicizing it. It will go out in next week's E-News. And then we're going to be talking about what, what happens from there at the management team level. We will likely be looking at expanding seating even more. Study rooms coming back is one of the things that we're starting to talk about. A lot of our reopening plans will be based on how soon we can get staff vaccinated. So far, things have just got, have just changed very recently that all government employees are now eligible. However, I will tell you that the counties vaccination things are there, like registrations, et cetera, are lagging. So staff are by and large still not able to get appointments. We, we are on the list with a local pharmacy in order to secure an onsite vaccination for staff. But we don't, there's no way of knowing how soon that will become available and how soon we'll be able to get staff vaccinated. Once we do, we are anticipating being able to start doing a lot more reopening of services, being able to do, really kind of get in there with, started, being able to consider things like in-person programming again, especially now that our meeting room is able to be open. So that's, that's pretty awesome. So we're, fingers crossed that we can get that all going and that the state's reopening plan and some of those announcements made recently about the availability of vaccines, et cetera, will actually come to fruition for us.
Julie, what percentage do you think of staff may be vaccinated already?
Oh God, maybe a quarter, definitely no more than that. It's only those who are, who have been eligible independently under, up to 1B now. So it's only folks who are over the age threshold or have underlying conditions that may have been able to secure a vaccine so far.
Question, has our staff embraced the vaccine pretty well? Do we think we're going to get a pretty high percentage once the vaccine is available?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Good. Happy to hear that.
Julie, what's the, and I think this, I think this category falls within this, but how are the patrons handling the, like the mask wearing? Just, just the general kind of behavior of patrons and kind of how is that going?
We've had a number of complaints. We've had a number of complaints. Um, obviously the mask wearing is the number one complaint. Um, we have seen an uptick. It's still the vast majority of people who come in. You know, ninety-five percent of the folks who come into the library have no problem. They wear their mask just fine. They keep it up above their nose. There is a small percentage that have to be reminded that just let it gradually creep. Um, and then there's a small percentage that we have to ask to leave for the day because they just can't keep it going. We do offer, uh, if somebody's having trouble keeping their mask up, very often it's because they're wearing an ill-fitting mask. So we do have disposable masks available for folks and, and we offer those and, and I'll tell you, actually on multiple occasions, Tony, our security monitor has instructed people on how to use the little metal tab to, to help keep it up above their nose, which I, you know, kudos, Tony, uh, and, and other staff too. They're, they're very, very kind about this. Uh, but we do still get complaints. Uh, we had one today as a matter of fact, someone who thinks that, um, the enforcement of mask wearing and all of the COVID protocols, and particularly the door monitoring and counting is unwelcoming. So those are the, the kinds of complaints that we're getting. Uh, you know, we did talk about why.
Right. Who, um, how, how does it work? I mean, is it basically all staff members are kind of responsible for, if they see someone in breach of the policy, like how, how does that work?
Every staff member is empowered to and, and encouraged to remind anyone that they see that their mask is slipping or mask is down, that they have to wear their mask over their nose, mouth and chin the entire time they're in the library. And if, um, if they're seen with it slipping again, they'll be asked to leave for the day. The announcement plays every half an hour that we're open. So it's, and, and it says you'll wear it or you will be asked to leave the library. And then once someone has been warned, we do tell the person, the, um, staff member who is acting as person in charge at that time to let them know that someone's been warned. I, and again, the vast majority of folks who are coming in are following the policy.
Pretty good. Does anyone else have any questions regarding the reauthorization of the COVID nineteen response and reopening phasing plan as presented? Okay, do we have a motion to approve, to, to reauthorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within parameters of COVID nineteen response and reopening phasing plan as presented? Do we have a motion?
I will enthusiastically make that motion.
Okay.
And I will second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item nine A that has been seconded. The approval of the continuation of the COVID nineteen response and phase reopening plan. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Graber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item nine A. We're now on to agenda item number ten, the library director's report. Julie.
I just want to start with kudos to our amazing staff who've had a really rough start to March. It's, it's been, since we reopened in February, just the number of folks who are non-compliant, you know, it, it's scary for them, you know, they're worried about their health and safety and, and I'll tell you, a year into all this pandemic stuff, they're, they're, our staff is scared and worried, but they are doing an amazing job at just trying the hardest thing in the world, which is to balance enforcement of rules and empathy. And so they are doing, they are working so hard to do this right. And it's not an easy thing to balance those two. And they are really, they, they've done such a good job at it. And, and I know that we sometimes give conflicting procedural advice about, you know, we, we want you to be empathetic, but we also have a zero tolerance mask policy. And that is rough on them. And they've, they continue to be just their amazing selves and give that top-notch customer service every day. And so I really want to recognize them and, and their, um, hard work over the past year. And it's, it's not easy to have to keep doing this, but we're really hopeful that, that things are going in the right direction. And if we could just get vaccines to everyone, uh, it will, things are gonna get better. They are definitely gonna get better. And on that note, um, I've got a whole bunch of things to talk about. Our equity advisory team had their first meeting and that was a really, um, productive meeting. The team is, is already starting to come together. They, they've got a really good direction with the equity strategic plan. And I'm looking forward to the work of that team and their contribution. I think that this is going to give us such a solid foundation, um, moving forward in the arena of equity, but also for our larger strategic plan moving forward. So great things happening there. I do want to remind you that in my librarians report, um, in the board packet, it does still have the August third date. We have since, uh, changed that to September seventh for the next, for the second, uh, board of trustees. Training, the first one will be on June first and the second one will be September seventh. Please let me know as soon as possible if you have a conflict with one of those, uh, so we can work on rescheduling.
So I was the one who had a conflict with April sixth and as of today, there's a chance I might not have that conflict. I'll know by the end of the, the week, but I guess I'm letting you know. I mean, I thought I was a hundred percent in stone and I want to let you know as early as possible, but I guess I'm saying that if September is too late for, if you feel like that's taking the process longer than you wanted it to. And, um, if I let you know, like on Friday, if you guys wanted to put April sixth back in instead of September.
I don't, uh, Kim, I don't know if April sixth, I, I don't remember if April sixth works for me or not, but I don't think it does at this point. So, um.
April sixth no longer works for me either because I booked something as soon as I found out we canceled that one. So sorry.
And this is why we do the super far in advance because everybody's schedule is totally in flux and we appreciate that, Kim. Um, it will, we'll keep moving forward. It's, it's fine. It'll all be fine. We'll get these trainings in. It, it's gonna work. Um, Rashida's got them on her calendar. So, uh, hopefully we can, uh, make sure that those, our goal is just to get them done by the end of twenty twenty-one, both sessions. So, so far we have, we even have a little wiggle room. On the land acknowledgement, I, I talked a little bit about that in our, in my librarians report again. Uh, we, the library started working on a land acknowledgement with the, um, Downers Grove Park District Museum folks. Uh, they put us in touch with, uh, a professor from Ohio State University that they'd been working with about a, uh, uh, land acknowledgement. And, uh, one of our wonderful, uh, librarians, Van McGary, has really taken the lead on this and, and, uh, is moving us forward. And ironically, we had, had started this work with them, working on a suite of resources. So making a land acknowledgement that could be used by any organization in the Downers Grove area along with an FAQ and some supporting resources that any of these, um, other entities could also use, should they choose to. Um, one of the most important pieces that, uh, Dr. John N. Low, our, the professor from Ohio State has advised is that if you make a land acknowledgement, it needs to end with a therefore statement. The what are you gonna do about it? So obviously we cannot draft this for any other organization in its entirety. We can do the first part and we can make some suggestions on that second part. But it will be up to in individual organizations. That all being said, the village, uh, council of Downers Grove last week voted, uh, to start working on a land acknowledgement and to seek out partnership with the library and the historical society on this. And when they reached out to us, they found out that we're way ahead of them. Um, so we are, we're continuing our work and, uh, we have a list of contacts from all of the different government entities in town. We also reached out to the school districts, uh, and, um, and the historical society, we now have a, a contact there. Um, so when this is all drafted, we'll be getting that group together and talking about how they can make use of, of these resources and, uh, how to use it.
Trustee Doherty, trustee Doherty.
Um, I'm curious to know, I, I don't know, um, Dr. Low and kind of his work or his, you know, background, reputation, kind of how he's been involved with this in the past, but, um, I do know from my own organization pursuing land acknowledgement and, and kind of understanding what that looks like from an institutional point of view. Um, are, have we, do, do we have contacts with the Native American community that we're kind of working with to make sure that we're incorporating that, the community voice in, in that perspective? I mean, it's, it's good to have the, the buy-in and participation from all these, you know, historical society and government entities, but the Native American communities are the ones who, who might have the most kind of relevant things to say about this whole process.
Dr. Low is a member of one of the Native American communities that is, uh, from our area or includes our area. Um, and he, uh, teaches in, um, Native American studies there. Uh, and it was actually the museum started working with him first. They identified him as their consultant and just kind of passed him off to us. Uh, he has not, he's not under a contract. And actually, uh, we did receive a FOIA request, um, at the end of last week about uh, his work with us, asking for any contract, any invoices, any payments made to him and any documents that he has pursuant to his work for us. Um, there is no contract. There has been no invoices, no payments were made. And everything that we're working on for him is still in draft form, obviously, because nothing has come before you. So there were no responsive documents to that, uh, FOIA request. And with the supporting resources that we are working on, that includes information on, uh, the local, most local of contacts that we can find for the, those indigenous people from our area. And then, and obviously I, I will say, we've only been working on this for a very short time. And, uh, you know, we haven't gotten through all of that. We haven't even had our second internal staff meeting on this. So that's not till Monday.
It, it can go very slowly. I'll just put that out there. This is, it's not something that happens quickly. And it can be frustrating, I think, for folks that are leading the project. So, yeah, just, you know, something to be aware of. But thank you. That's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Trustee Humphreys. You're on mute.
I can't tell you how excited I am about this. Couple of other organizations that I've worked with, uh, in other parts of the country have been through this process. And so, uh, while I'm not an expert on it by any means, I'm more observer, but I'm enthusiastic observer. And I am really excited to see us being proactive on this. I agree that, uh, we need to, to the extent we can and should, uh, involve, uh, local Native American representatives. And when I say local, I don't know how granular this project is. In other words, is all of Downers Grove going to be in one acknowledgement statement, kind of just because it's, it's one relatively small area or are they, are they more granular than that? And we probably don't know the answer to that yet, but, uh, I know that there are other organizations in the community. I know of one very personally, but I know that there are oddly more, both businesses and not-for-profit groups and so on, that would like to partner on this and, or at least use the, the research so that, uh, they will be able to make acknowledgements of their own at the appropriate time and develop their own therefore statements and so forth. And I hope that we as a, a recommending group, uh, will have some examples of some therefore statements for these groups.
Uh, one of our starting points for this was actually, uh, Assistant Director Jen Rieske's work with the Illinois Library Association's Best Practices Committee that had been putting together best practices, resources for land acknowledgements. And so that really gave us a jumping off point when all of this started rolling. So yes, to your point, Dave, yes, um, same, some samples, uh, we're hoping to be able to collect things like that. And again, an FAQ, why are we, what is a land acknowledgement? Why do you make one? What do you do with it? And, and all of those things. One of the most interesting things to me as we're looking at this statement is the fact that not only did we have a number of different people, different people groups who were here um, and, and resided here historically, there were also quite a few that were moved from other areas here, stayed for a while and then had, were moved yet again. And so th- there are many layers to, to this. And, and it's one of the things, as Carissa said, it's, it's not gonna be an, oh, this isn't an overnight, it's not a short process to bring this information together, particularly for our area. As, as, uh, tribes and groups were moved from, um, Michigan, from, um, Wisconsin. So as they were moved south and primarily moved south and west, you can kind of see how that would happen through the Chicagoland area. So interesting stuff. Um, we're, we're really, uh, hoping to be able to, to get some good mileage out of the, uh, the research that, that we can do as a library and, and help support our other institutions, uh, in this way.
I would also just say really quick, Julie, just, just a little side note that when we talk about indigenous communities, that we should try to use present tense because people are still here, right? Some people still live on this land. And it's really important that we don't say like lived here, but they still live here. So I just want to make sure we get that really kind of in our, in our, in our language because it's not past this present. Sorry.
Absolutely. Thank you for, for correcting me on that. Um, when, uh, I'm always thinking of, of the historical perspective on this, um, because where we've started on this acknowledgement, it's, it's that we're talking about all the, the past parts and, and now, um, it is important to acknowledge that the Chicagoland area has the third largest population of Native Americans in the country. And so Barnali's point is well taken. Our Native Americans live here today. And, okay, on to whatever my next thing was. Oh, I, I did want to take a moment. Oh, I, I did want to take a moment to apologize for not getting to the strategic plan review in the month of March. I will tell you, there just aren't enough hours in the day or days in the week. This has been, it's been a challenging month, so I do, I, it is prioritized for me for prior to the April Board Meeting. I've blocked out time on my calendar, the whole nine yards. And then I really want to highlight, and this is all Jen's work, and with an assist from Caitlin, the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, which is also in your packet tonight. I just want to hit a couple of highlights on our statistics. We were open for about fifty percent of our typical hours for 2020. During that time, we had only about a third of our normal number of visits, but we checked out sixty-eight percent of our normal circulation. We had about a third-ish of reference questions, of one-on-one sessions. But we also had, also, if you're looking at your programming statistics, that the passive program attendance, that includes recorded virtual attendance, which actually rose in 2020. And of course, our regular attendance, which includes live virtual events, is, is included in the regular program attendance. We more than doubled the amount of staff training we would normally do in a year, partially because that's what we had staff doing when we were closed to the public. And everything that came around COVID and safety and new procedures, that is included there. And as we move into this year, in 2021, through the end of February, we're actually running at seventy percent of circulation, and our visits are at about forty-eight percent. So we can see that uptick. We're already, you know, starting to get that, hopefully, closer to normal. And if you wanted, the thing that struck me most about the February statistics was that our website views are up almost four hundred percent. And kudos to our PR staff and IT staff who worked so hard on our new website that we launched in January of 2020, because talk about well timed. We were able to do a lot of more responsive things with the website. I mean, just in this past month, we've added two new pages, one for social services and one for book discussion groups. And then, I do want to address our anti-Asian hate crime statement that went out today. We have received fourteen emails that were negative reactions to the library doing this. In general, those are objections to the library being too political or using taxpayer dollars in this way, or disagreeing that the specific events in, were a hate crime. So, that's just an overview of what we're getting on the negative side. On the positive side, we've had eight positive emails, but we've also had entirely positive social media response to date, which includes thirty-two reactions, eighteen shares, four comments, one direct message. And our total reach on that, on the Facebook post alone, was one thousand and sixty-four as of about an hour before this meeting started. So, we have had some very positive feedback through social media on this statement. So I wanted to thank you for coming out so strongly in support of our Asian and Pacific Islander community here in Downers Grove and in the world.
Thank you very much, Julie. Do we have any, and maybe this will just lead us in, does anyone have any reactions, I guess initially, to Agenda Item 10, the Library Director's Report? Or alternatively, we could move to Agenda Item 11, Trustee Comments and Requests for Information, which I will do. We'll move to Agenda Item 11, Trustee Comments and Requests for Information. Trustee Humphreys.
I don't know where to start. I already made the comment before we, I think before the meeting started, that, that I audibly cheered when I read that statement that came out today. And we need to be proactive with statements of that sort. We've had ongoing racist activities in many areas, but just this week, the tragedies in Atlanta and Boulder and others are, we just can't ignore these things. And we have to take positions as communities, and we are a part of this community. So I'm happy we did that. Another comment, going back to the, the staff dealing with people who choose not, or are not wearing their masks appropriately. I just thank the staff for being proactive and making sure protected, they're protecting themselves, but they're actually protecting the people they're speaking to, even though it may not be acknowledged that way. And I just want to make sure that the staff knows that we have their back on that. And we want them to be safe and follow the rules when they're doing that, so. I guess just lastly, one more comment about the acknowledgement, the land acknowledgement thing. I'm, I'm very much in favor of our pursuing that. As a little bit of student of history of this area, there were a lot of indigenous peoples in this area long before we came. And then, as was pointed out, many were moved here back in the nineteenth century and so forth. And the mere fact that a lot of the histories point out that, that natives like, Native Americans like, indigenous peoples like Chief Obantzi and Chief Shabana and so forth, were, were very friendly to the settlers. And that was true. Chief Blackawg from the Sox, a little less so, but that doesn't mean that we can't still, and just because they were polite to us and, and cooperative and so forth, that doesn't mean that we are not responsible for, well, forgive me, but taking their land. When Pierce Downer, from the east, and settled in a grove of trees in the Indian Boundary Area of northeastern Illinois, he quote, "bought that land," quote, but the money didn't go to the, the indigenous people. So, I think acknowledging that two hundred years later is very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Humphreys. Any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
I just want to say, Julie and the staff, thank you, like, speaking as an Asian person. And I, I just want to thank you, but, for that letter, for writing it, for putting it together, for the staff, for supporting the staff members. I got to meet at the Equity Advisory Team, I got to meet some of the Asian members of the staff. And the pain in our community is really, really profound right now, and I appreciate all of your support. And I appreciate the other board members and the trustees, like, standing together, because I think it's really important that we all make a really strong statement. So thank you from me and my family as community members here in Downers Grove.
Thank you very much, Barnali. Any additional trustee comments or requests for information? All right. Thank you very much for a great meeting, everyone. And I'll see you next month, and I'll hereby adjourn the meeting.